Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call to order the, gosh, what month is this? June. Can't believe that. The June Elizabeth City Schools Board of Education meeting. Happy to have everyone out. We will try to get you in and out, hopefully, quickly as possible tonight so everybody can go enjoy the beautiful weather. If you would, please stand. Mr. Alexander's going to lead us to pledge the flag in a moment of silence.
As we pause for a moment of silence, I ask that you thank the family of Dr. Joe May, who recently passed, as well as Mr. Jim Lineball's family, that Jennifer Taylor's dad, and also as Brittany May continues to fight the serious illness that she has. Please pause. Thank you.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which this stands, one nation under God, and individual liberty that stretches around.
If you've noticed, we're a little short tonight, a little shorthanded. Mrs. Baker, Ms. Baker had a doctor's appointment. She wasn't feeling great, so we hope she's feeling better. And then found out through John Thompson, thank you very much, that Ms. Armstrong's not going to be with us. She had, is getting ready or has had cataract surgery. So we hope her recovery goes well and that both of them are feeling, feeling better. So, here goes Mr. Alexander.
At this time, Jeff Fox will come forward and Dr. Gardner.
This has been an exciting year for us, and one of the really neat things we get to do is recognize employees who have gone above and beyond to provide an environment in our school system that's truly terrific for children. And Jeff has been recognized by Vanderbilt University as doing a successful transition to work. Vanderbilt, as you well know, is the number one special ed college in the world. And so it's not just our nation, it's in the world. It is considered, it has the best professors, it has the best research that's going on. And out of the research of Dr. Eric Walker, came a program where they recognized students who have made successful transitions to work. Jeff and his family worked together. He started working with us when he was in high school, and he's worked with us successfully for five years through our vocational rehabilitation program. And just being supervised by Gloria Hall, I want her to come up here as well. She's a part of the family, too. I did an interview with Jeff and found out a lot of interesting things about him, things I didn't know. Not only did he make a successful transition to work for the last five years, but he has his own landscaping business that he does. He's even refereed a little professional wrestling at his time. But he's a diverse guy. He has a lot of talents, and I think he's had very supportive parents of him. They haven't been willing to just let him sit at home. They've instilled a wonderful, lasting work ethic in him. And so Jeff, we're proud of you. You're being recognized on a national level for your transition to work, and his information will be put on the Vanderbilt website along with his story, and it'll be shared with everyone. Here's a certificate from the board. Thank you.
At this point, Dr. Gardner, hang on a minute. If the rest of the family will come up, you will get a large picture which we'll share with you later on. If the family members will all come up, and we'll scrooge in together a little bit here so that Mr. Hicks and Mr. Trent can make pictures there. Y'all just sort of... Banny, you gonna be able to get them all? At this time, Ms. Danielle Vines will come forward and Mr. Wilson. The microphone here.
It is my pleasure to be here with Danielle Vines, and I just want to say, we've, we've had a tremendous year in athletics at the school this year and the school system. And there are some tremendously talented people in our school. And if you haven't seen these folks perform, I'm not going to give you the old, oh, come out and support these kids. That, you need to come out and be entertained. I mean, they can, you will be amazed at what some of these kids can do that we have currently in our school. And they're back next year. We have, it's just unbelievable, some of the athletes that we have. And I had the great pleasure to see Dani play, Danny, okay, see Dani play this year. And I'd always heard so much about Dani, and I knew her brother Hunter because he'd played some ball with some of my children. And I'd always heard about Dani and what a great tennis player she was. I'd never had the privilege to see her play. And she came to school this year, and I remember walked down to the courts and watched her play against Sullivan South. And when I saw Dani play, the first time I saw her hit the ball, it reminded me, I've told everyone, it reminded me the first time I saw a touring professional golfer hit a golf ball. And it's just like, you know, you, you just stand there and look at it and go, oh, that's what it's supposed to look like when you do it. Honestly, you know, it's just shocking. And the ball comes off her racket like a BB, and it's just unbelievable the way she can play. I couldn't believe it. We, of course, she qualifies, obviously, for the state tournament. We go down for the spring fling, and Coach Harden and I and Coach Krujak were down there trying to balance track and tennis, and so we, we go watch her play. And the first day, I'm kind of nervous because I know she's a great player, but you know, you're always thinking, oh, I hope this goes well. And she goes out and plays this young lady and beats her 60-60. I think it took, what was it, Coach Harden, 31 minutes or something, something like that. And there was, there was one bad thing, though. It was kind of a bad thing for the, for the other girl's family. After the first set, she got beat 60, first set, and they're sitting down howling off, you know, drinking a little water, whatever they do. And the girl's father, I guess, realizing that this, his daughter was not going to win, yelled out, "Smile, honey, you're making memories." And the girl turned around and said, "Shut up." So then in the second match, she, she wins 60-60. I think it took 34 minutes. So in an hour and five minutes, she's disposed to two opponents. And I'm thinking, well, you know, tomorrow's she play, the next day, she'd rather she had to play the two-time defending state champion. And I was nervous about it, you know, we, because, you know, I know Dani's, I believe Dani's going to win, but it's still, you gotta go out and do it, and there's some pressure. And, and this girl's a great player, she really was. This girl could play. And I said, two-time defending state champion. We're watching them warm up, and they're volleying back and forth. And clearly, this girl, and she's playing in the finals, is better than the two she had played before. And the match started, and the points were tough, back and forth. And I had never seen anybody make Dani move on the court. I'd just seen Dani stand there and hit these rocket shots back and forth, and these people couldn't do anything with it. This girl can, and then I realized what a great athlete she really was. She obviously had great hand-eye coordination, the way she hit the ball, but she covered the entire court in 5'10", 5'10". Great speed, great quickness, unbelievable hand-eye coordination, power, and same-time touch. And I, I will say this, during that match, I was a little disappointed. There was some profanity out there on the court from her opponent, and I was shocked and taken aback by that. I've never, I'm just not used to that.
I heard that.
But this was a much tougher match. Dani won 6-1, 6-1. She actually gave up two games in that match. But she represented our school beautifully, dignity and grace and class and winning. And just, it was a pleasure to watch her. And I think, without a doubt, she is, I don't know that I've ever seen anybody more advanced in the game they play than Dani is. And if you've never seen her play, you owe it to yourself to see her play. She is truly great. And we are thrilled that she was with us, won the state championship, and it was just wonderful to watch. I never would have believed I would have enjoyed watching tennis as much as I did that day, but it was just amazing, the shots she hit and her athleticism. So we present this plaque to Dani, and I would read it, but it's written on microfilm, and I can't read it, so I have no problem with that. So Dani, here is your plaque, and I'm sure it says nice things on it. So if the family would come up and Coach Harden, and we're going to make some pictures, I think.
Yes, that's correct. You're in the picture, too. At this time, with Mr. Richard Barker, please come to the podium here where you can...
My name is Richard Barker. As most of you are probably aware, my wife Marilyn passed away three months ago yesterday from a pulmonary disease. Last Friday would have been a 59th birthday. Marilyn and I felt very fortunate to be natives of Elizabethan, products of Elizabethan city school systems, and graduates of Elizabethan High School. We felt that the education we received with, through this system propelled us through college and on to successful careers. While we initially had mixed emotions concerning replacing Brown Children Stadium, primarily because of sentimental reasons associated with the fact that's right where we went to school, we came to the realization that the new facility was a progressive step for Elizabethan and for the school system. Progressive for the football program, the Betsy Band, for which Marilyn was a proud alum and serving in the band from 1969 to 1973, and for the other sports teams in the community which will utilize and benefit from this facility. In this regard, joined by Marilyn's mom Carolyn, my mom Betty Jo, my brother-in-law Joe, and my sister Debbie, who wasn't able to be here tonight due to a prior work commitment, I wish to present a check in the amount of $15,000 toward the construction of the new Elizabethan High School football program in memory of Marilyn. May it serve as an lasting memorial to the community Marilyn loved, and to those that loved her.
Mr. Trent, if you would come forward, please. Now we need the family to come up.
Albeit reluctantly, but...
It's time for citizens to speak in accordance with Board Policy 1.404. Anyone wishing to speak before the board, please come forward, state your name, address, at the podium. Hearing none, we will move on. Yeah, if you guys, you're more than welcome to stay, but if you want to leave, you are certainly welcome to do so. But you're welcome to stay if you'd like as well.
I told you, you could do it.
What a great way to start a meeting. I like, that was wonderful. It's time now to approve the consent and regular agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Hang a second.
Second.
Thank you. Anyone, first of all, is there any questions or comments anybody has? If not, could I ask that we consider, from the regular agenda, taking items seven, eight, and nine, and voting on those together. They're all change of positions or creation of positions, so they all kind of go together. And then if we could take items 17 through 21, these are all to, they're just bid approvals from previous vendors. So if you guys are okay, we'll combine those. Is everybody okay with that? Fantastic. Item on the floor is to approve consent and, consent and regular agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Mr. Alexander.
Several comments, first of all, about our student athletes. To say the least, what they have done is no small feat. We've had three state championships this year. That's, of course, the band, the girls' basketball, and now tennis, and many other achievements at state level, including chorus, CTE, and things of this nature. Even though they're not called state championships, that's what they are. And I believe it's also important that remember, we remember the coaches, the teachers, and the school administrators there that, that have supported these people as they've gone down the road. And we're so hoping that next year will be even more bountiful in that, in that relationship. Also, I'd like to say that the board chair and I attended on June 2nd the regional State Department of Education meeting for the First Tennessee area. That was in Jonesboro, at which we were told the commissioner, Commissioner Huffman would be present. His failure to be there and sort of face the music was somewhat disheartening, say the least, especially since board members have been asked to take off work to be there. But one bit of information that we, I placed at your desk there about retention, there'd been some talk about movement of personnel and things of this nature, which are, you'll see, there's a lot of that in here, but that doesn't necessarily mean we were moving them out. But anyway, that, if you would get an opportunity this week possibly to look at the retention and effectiveness document that's on your, on, in your desk, I'd appreciate that. Now, for the personnel changes here, folks, this will be, I'll try to run through this very quickly because it has to be read into the record, and if you'll bear with me on this. First of all, new hires: Kelsey McCamey, Life Guard and Community Involvement Program, effective 5/27; Leanne Click, EHS Head Girls Tennis Coach, effective 6/9; Kristen Colette, Herr McCormick Guidance Counselor, effective 7/21; Lauren Brown, EHS Teacher, effective 8/4; David Campbell, EHS Teacher, effective 8/4; Rachel Campbell, Eastside Teacher, effective 8/4; Bonnie Grunstaff, EHS Teacher, effective 8/4; Ashlyn Martin, Eastside Teacher, effective 8/4; Sarah Pennley, Westside Teacher, effective 8/4; Randy McLeod, TA Duggar Teacher, effective 8/4; Brittany Johnson, Eastside Teacher, effective 8/4; Eliza Carbejo, Harrow McCormick Teacher, effective 8/4, that's not a Cat Island name there, if you'll notice; Jessica Green, TA Duggar Teacher, effective 8/4; Samuel Adams, not a beer; EHS Language Teacher, 8/4; Carl Hall, TA Duggar Part-Time Math Teacher, effective 8/4. Also, we have Selena Stout, Eastside Interim Math Interventionist, 8/11 to 12/19. Okay, the resignations now: Jill Buckles, Eastside Office-Based Teacher Assistant, effective 5/23; Kenneth Harden, EHS Girls Tennis Coach, effective 5/26; Larry Gooch, Herr McCormick Assistant to the Teacher, effective 8/28; Linda Guimont, Westside Part-Time Assistant to the Teacher, effective 6/2; Brian Moore, EHS Girls Golf Coach, effective 6/2; Lacy Jones, Early Learning Center Lunchroom Assistant and Custodian, effective 6/4. I appreciate y'all hanging on here, folks. Leanne Click, EHS Head Softball Coach, effective 6/9; Timothy Crowe, Systemwide Maintenance Worker, effective 6/13. Now, in reference to leaves of absence, Elizabeth Holman, Eastside Teacher, from 9/22 to 1/215; Julie Smith, Eastside Teacher, from 8/11 to 12/19; Eric Wampler, TA Duggar Assistant Principal, from 8/12 to 9/3. Now, retirements: Chris Ann Toll, EHS Teacher, effective 5/26; Carolyn Adifer, Eastside Reading Coach, effective 5/26; Carson Frazier, Herr McCormick Custodian, effective 5/27. Now, in reference to transfers: Rebecca Vines, from ESP Childcare Worker to TA Duggar Assistant Site Coordinator, effective 6/2; Angela Peters, from EHS Data Manager to EHS Administrative Assistant to the Athletic Director, effective 7/21; Amy Darling, from EHS Part-Time Assistant to the Teacher to EHS Data Manager, effective 7/21; Brian Moore, from TA Duggar Teacher to TA Duggar Guidance Counselor, effective 7/21; Anne Rogers, from Herr McCormick Guidance Counselor to EHS Guidance Counselor, effective 7/21; Judy Fletcher, from EHS Assistant to the Principal to Elementary Assistant to the Principal's, plural, effective 7/28; Ellen Taylor, from Herr McCormick League Custodian to Westside Custodian, effective 7/28; Doris Woodby, from Westside Custodian to Herr McCormick Custodian, effective 7/28; Mark Hatt, from TA Duggar Teacher to TA Duggar STEM Teacher, effective 8/4; Donnie Shipley, from TA Duggar Teacher to EHS Teacher, effective 8/4; Kelly Bowling, from EHS Teacher to Herr McCormick Math Interventionist, effective 8/4; Rachel Ayers, from Eastside Teacher to Eastside Reading Coach, effective 4/8/4; Catherine Hartman, from Herr McCormick Math Coach to Eastside Teacher, effective 8/4; Daniel Prophet, from TA Duggar Teacher to EHS Teacher, effective 8/4; Brian Moore, from EHS Teacher to TA Duggar Teacher, effective 8/4; Crystal Ramsey, from Systemwide Vision Teacher to Westside Vision slash Resource Teacher, effective 8/4; Carol Roberts, from EHS Teacher to TA Duggar Teacher, effective 8/4; Ryan White, TA Duggar Teacher to EHS Teacher, effective 8/4; John Smith, from EHS Language Art slash French Teacher to EHS Teacher of French, effective 8/4; Whitney Birchfield, from Assistant to the Teacher at Early Learning Center to Assistant to the Teacher at TA Duggar, effective 8/6; Barry Edney, from Assistant to the Teacher at Early Learning Center to Assistant to the Teacher at TA Duggar, effective 8/6; Kathy Norris, from Westside Assistant to the Teacher to TA Duggar Assistant to the Teacher, effective 8/6; Amy Trotter, from TA Duggar Assistant to the Teacher to EHS Assistant to the Teacher, effective 8/6; Cassandra Volgus, from Herr McCormick Assistant to the Teacher to TA Duggar Assistant to the Teacher, effective 8/6; also, Brian Moore, from TA Duggar Teacher to TA Duggar Guidance Counselor, effective 7/21; Heather Brodeo, from EHS Resource Teacher to Westside ESL slash Resource Teacher, effective 8/4. Thank you.
Wow. You have to be exhausted. Now, reports by the board or any administrative staff. I think, Dr. May, you went to a TSBA workshop?
I went to the TSBA workshop on board advocacy for children, and it, it was pretty informative. I think you've all been, you probably have that, but if not, I have the, the informational materials. It was good information about how to relate with legislators and the city councilmen, primarily. That was a lot of what it dealt with, was dealing with your funding bodies, and we all sell, apparently, we all have the same struggles. The Johnson City System and I talked quite a bit, and it sounds like that we have a better relationship with our city council than they do. But they also talked a little bit about a growing social media presence of schools, and that was a new thing, that there's, they're recommending that we embrace that, use that as a little bit better way to reach out to parents and, and students, and to have a face on that as a system. And that's maybe something we may want to look at talking about at some point, is how do you have that presence safely as an, as a system, not as individuals, per se, for reaching out and getting your information out there where they're looking, where people are looking, so that, for relationships. That's an interesting part. Nothing really further to add, but thank y'all for sending me.
I forget, it's been a couple of weeks ago, Ms. Perkins, Mr. Van Haas, and Dr. Gardner, and I came up to Central Office, and we sat and listened to a webinar presented by TSBA on policies. There's several new laws that have come into place, and we're going to need to do some policy workshops. Now, we're going to have to look at some things. I'm saying this now because it's the end of the meeting, I want to bring this back up. It would be a lot for us to put all the things that we need to do on a regular meeting. I mean, it's, some of them are going to be basic housekeeping, some of them are going to require some conversation. So if you guys would put your thinking caps on, and we'll get in touch with Ms. Armstrong and Ms. Baker, I, I suggest what we should do is have a policy workshop where we can sit and talk about these policies, get some information from the administrative staff about how, you know, get their input, and then probably have a called meeting so we can vote on them. I just think it would be so much to put all the policies on a regular meeting, we would be here for a while. So let's just think about that, and bring it up to the end of the meeting, but that might be something we want to consider doing, simply because it is a lot of information. So, yeah, throw that out there for you. All right, ready to move on? Okay, so we're going to take regular agenda items seven, eight, and nine, and we will vote on that as one if everybody's okay with. So I'll start reading them. Item on the floor is to approve change of position classification from High School Assistant to the Principal to Assistant Principal. Correction to comply with TASL standards. Number eight is to approve change in classification for Special Education Assistant to the Teacher from part-time to full-time to best meet the needs of a student, to meet the needs of students at TA Duggar Junior High School. And number nine is approve creation of interim Elementary Assistant Principal Position. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Let me talk about this just a moment here. To begin with, Mr. Boatman at the high school was considered Assistant to the Principal, and in so doing, it could, it could not attend the Tassel workshops, and therefore couldn't move ahead with his with his professional license as an administrator. So, we, this does not change his, sadly enough, his salary or the time that he's working, but he will be calling Assistant Principal, so he can attend the TASSL standards and receive his certification. Now, the number eight here, approve changing classification for Special Education Assistant, this is to allow, this is to give more time for a teacher assistant to not only be there during the day full-time, but also to ride the bus, as you all know, many, many times there are concerns on the buses as well as at school, and he'll be able to do that. Also, the number nine there, approve creation of interim Elementary Assistant Principal Position. This means that an individual will be placed in the elementary level housed at E-Side that can help at all places in that we have needs in all those. So, I just think, I appreciate the Board's consideration of this, and Ms. Wilson's working with us on this, because this was difficult to find, and she's been very helpful in doing that. She's not here this evening, I told her not to come, because she's with her family. But anyway, there's what we are.
Any questions or comments on these? Okay. Item on the floor is to approve change of position classification from High School Assistant to the Principal to Assistant Principal. Correction to comply with TASL standards. Approve changing classification for Special Education Assistant to the Teacher from part-time to full-time to best meet the needs of the students at TA Dugger. Approve creation of interim Elementary Assistant Principal Position. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Next, approve distribution of information, a memorandum of understanding from the Carter County Health Department for Mass Flu Vaccination. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, working closely with Caroline Hurt, as the leader there at the Health Department, and Fay Willis, this is asking for the Board's approval to do the flu vaccines in our schools. Last year, we did not do that, because there were some questions about the fee schedule that related to insurance, it's very, very complex, and it would have been misleading some people, and people have been left out. But this year, money-wise, the problem has been taken care of, as it relates to, the schools will be pursuing the information, having that in advance, they will bill separately, and aside from that day, no money will be taken at that, at that time. But anyway, the Health Department is asking us to approve, for the Board to approve the memorandum of understanding, as it relates to the mass flu vaccination. And I would appreciate your taking action on that.
Any questions coming? Item on the floor is to approve distribution of information, a memorandum of understanding from the Carter County Health Department for Mass Flu Vaccination. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Next is to approve the 2014 slash 2015 differentiated pay plan for the Elizabethan City Schools. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
And this one, you've had an opportunity, I'm sure, to look at that, but it'll also be mentioned very closely in the complex nature of this, in number 14 down below, and Mr. Van Heusen should just chomp at the bits to answer any questions that you might have. But, any questions that you might have?
Not sure what questions to ask it, but is this not something that's already in place?
There are some components, as you, as you know, the state has required us, every school system, to have a differentiated pay plan, and earlier in the year, there was a lot of discussion about some additional funding to make, maybe this plan have some more teeth to it. But when that was removed from the Governor's budget, they allowed us some more flexibility. So, you are correct. For instance, the first thing, the hardest staff area is, we already have that in place for the speech and language pathologists, that's a very hard position to find, so we have, they get a 5% salary increase as an extra incentive to come with our system. So that is already in place. The next, on the next page, the creation of five school-level PLC coordinators, that isn't, that is new, and basically, those individuals will help lead the professional learning communities in each building, and the principal will choose from individuals that score either four or five on their effectiveness rating for their evaluation. So those will be new, and there'll be a stop and associated with that. The next one under education, the only thing that changes there is, in the existing format, we had a bachelor's plus, plus 30 step, and a master's plus 30 step. Those will be eliminated. As a matter of fact, the state has encouraged school systems to do away with steps based on education. We feel like that's a mistake, we feel like we should recognize those people that earned advanced degrees. So what we've done is suggested that we remove those middle steps, again, the bachelor's plus 30, and the master's plus 30. Anyone in our system that's currently on that step will continue to receive funding on that level, but moving forward, after August the 1st, anyone that wants an increase will have to actually earn the degree. So there won't be these two intermediate steps any longer. But that won't affect, again, anyone that's currently on one of those steps. So that, that is, that is a new, new component. And, and then the experience, you know, they've encouraged, you know, not to have steps based on experience, and we think that's a mistake as well, and this is, is currently in place.
So this will be the new plan moving forward, is that correct?
Yes, sir. And this plan has been approved by the State Department.
So we are going to continue to, for advanced degrees?
Yes, ma'am.
Not everyone's doing that, correct?
That's correct.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. And a lot of people are completely revamping their pay structure to be based on effectiveness scores, you know, which, so now our steps will be bachelor's degree for entry level, master's degree, EDS, and a doctoral degree. So those steps will still be there.
We, we felt that this would pull the rug out from under, if we eliminated those, those advanced degrees, it would pull the rug out from under those people who wanted to see that, even though the other people would be taken care of, we're already in the program. And a lot of these decisions will be made in Nashville by people who have not grown older within the confines of the system and experience. So, and it does lean heavily on the scores, and scores are important, but they're not the all, be all and end all. And I appreciate the work you've done, Ms. Van Heusen.
Any other questions coming? Item on the floor is to approve 2014-2015 differentiated pay plan for the Elizabethan City Schools. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Next item is to approve granting reinstatement of tenure for Anna B. Hurley per guidelines of the Board Policy 5.117. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Anna Hurley is a tremendous language arts teacher at the high school, and she had obtained tenure, and then decided to go closer to home and teach at Hampton, and when she came to her senses, she came back to us, and she did, at one time, you had to get one year more year to be recommended, but now you have to get two, and she's done her time, and it does a tremendous job, every day is, is posting others would stand up for. I recommend hardly that she be brought back as a tenured employee.
Any questions or comments? Item on the, item on the floor, approve granting reinstatement of tenure for Anna B. Hurley per guidelines of Board Policy 5.117. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is approve contract with train for installation of new controls at E-Side and Westside Elementary Schools for a cost of $43,183.32. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Trent. By the way, folks, Mr. Trent does more than just take pictures here, he does a tremendous job as both maintenance and IT.
This request is, we're just trying to expand our energy controls we now have in place at all of our schools, minus E-Side and Westside, so for the $40,000, $40-plus thousand will be installed at those two locations as well.
This is what we previously talked about?
Yes, it is.
The last time, when we said that we were going to roll them out, and each time, there's an energy savings associated with it, too?
There is. And, you know, we're doing some work right now with the TVA, as far as with the last grant that we had, where we were set to receive $10,000 back. We're doing some energy audits, and trains helping us roll a lot of data together through the past couple of years, and we hope to have some pretty good numbers to kind of, maybe I could pass your way and show you just what energy savings we are getting, and I think you'll be really surprised, we should have some pretty good return on what we're spending.
This is what we discussed earlier in our budget workshops, it was in our budget for this upcoming year, so we're just going to put that in place.
Anything else? Item on the floor, approve contract with train for installation of new controls at E-Side and Westside Elementary Schools for a cost of $43,183.32. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Next item, approve first reading of Board Policy 5.110 as revised. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
As had been mentioned before, this goes hand in glove with the differentiated pay plan, and we had to have a policy to meet, or that would be in sync with what was being recommended in that plan. So this is what I also recommend, the passage.
Any questions or comments? Item on the floor, approve first reading of Board Policy 5.1110 as revised. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item, approve awarding RFP 2014-2014-01 for lawn maintenance services to J-Baz Complete Lawn Care for the fiscal year of July 1, 2014 through June 20, 2015. This contract will provide lawn maintenance services at all Elizabethan City Schools facilities at an annual cost of $47,162. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
If you will look at that attachment, folks, it's the bid with the company, which we currently have, that do a tremendous job, that all the principals, I think, would agree with, is almost $30,000 under the higher bid. So, in those circumstances, based on the services that we get, and they're very responsive, and that has nothing to do with Sam Reamel having been the father of that young man. Anyway, seriously, they do a tremendous job, and I think the public has made some way of the job that they do. So, I hardly recommend that.
Any questions or comments?
What do we currently plan, I hate to say, is this an increase over last year, or is it pretty much a same?
Mr. Trent, you want to address that?
It's not, it's the same as last year, but if you look at it, there is a slight increase, but we, we spray and the lawn care, it's equal to the same process.
Mr. Reamel had gotten certification to do that in the interim period.
Mail? Item on the floor is approve awarding RFP 2014-2014, sorry, 2014-2015-01 for lawn maintenance services to J-Baz Complete Lawn Care for the fiscal year of July 1, 2014 through June 20, 2015. This contract will provide lawn maintenance services at all Elizabethan City Schools facilities at an annual cost of $47,162. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item, approve awarding RFP 2014-2015-02 pest control services to Chapel Pest Control for the fiscal year, July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015. This contract will provide pest control services at all Elizabethan City Schools facilities at an annual cost of $4,800. Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
I would like to say that the chapel, they're the only compliant bidder on this, but not only that, but they handle all aspects of pest control, including bedbugs and things of this nature. When they told us that they had bedbug dogs, Mr. Trent and I were somewhat reluctant to believe it, but it is in fact true, and he's expanded that business quite a bit. But anyway, they're very responsive, even though we've had somewhat of a rodent problem back in the back, Ms. Williams, but anyway, I hardly, again, recommend that one, this, the selection of chapels.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Item on the floor, approve awarding RFP 2014-2015-02 pest control services to Chapel Pest Control for the fiscal year of July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015. This contract will provide pest control services at all Elizabethan City Schools facilities at annual cost $4,800. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, so we're going to combine 17 through 21, so get comfortable and daydream while I read all these. Item on the floor, first item is to approve bid 2014-2015-01-SN for the purchase of bread and grain products from Flowers Bakery for bid period of July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015. Flowers Bakery was the lowest responsible compliant bidder. Approve bid 2014-2015-02-SN, the purchase of milk and ice cream from Mayfield Dairy for bid period July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015. Mayfield Dairy was the lowest responsible compliant bidder. Approve bid 2014-2015-03-SN for the purchase of food items from Cisco Knoxville for the bid period July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015. Approve bid 2014-2015-04-SN, the purchase of miscellaneous cafeteria supplies from Cisco and Summers Hardware for the bid period July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015. Approve bid 2014-2015-05-SN, the purchase of fresh produce from Mary Salads for bid period of July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Yeah, you're forgetting which term it is. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? You're just sitting out there just hoping no one's going to ask you anything, aren't you? One of these days, I'm going to have a question for you, just, just to say I do.
We did our homework. We did our homework, so there's no questions to ask?
No questions to ask. All right, so, item on the floor is to approve the bid with Flowers Bakery, Mayfield Dairy, Cisco Knoxville, Cisco and Summers Hardware, Mary Salads. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. And, the last one is approve the program slash participation agreement certification of compliance non-discrimination policy, the free slash reduced price policy statement, and the local agricultural products compliance plan for the 2014-2015 school year. Wow. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Ms. Williams, that's a federal requirement, is it not? So, I mean, we don't have a choice. Once again, we comply or go to jail.
These make them very easy to, uh...
I did learn that, and a state legislator, board advocacy is that a lot of these things are just statute, you have to approve them. I asked, I asked the question, what happens if you don't, and they said, well, you have to. So I said, then why do we exist?
Good enough, because I said so.
We have some latitude on some things, but these we have to do, so...
And I like how it completes a complete thought, because I'm reading this, really? Okay, so, any questions or comments on this? Item on the floor, approve the program slash participation agreement certification of compliance non-discrimination policy, the free slash reduced price policy statement, and the local agricultural products compliance plan for the 2014-2015 school year. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, so, thoughts on a workshop? Do you guys want to do, would you be willing to do a policy workshop? So that we don't have to include that in a board meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay. If you would, please give Ms. Perkins some dates, and do you want to try to, a few days later, to have a called board meeting to vote on everything? Would that work? Do you think, in an effort to not combine everything into then, into another meeting, could we have a called meeting to deal with those? So we'll need two dates, and we'll get in touch with Ms. Armstrong and Ms. Baker. So, the next regularly scheduled school board meeting will be Thursday, July 17, 2014, 6:30 PM in the MacPierce Board Room. Also, our policies to review will be state and federal legislation updates, state board rules and regulations, policy changes necessary for the July board meeting. Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Have a good evening.